We have a motion for the consent agenda.
I second that.
All in favor? Thank you. The next Board of Selectmen meeting will be Monday, September 23 at 5:30 here at the town office in this very room. As part of the announcements, we have received a letter from the Bath Area Food Pantry and Soup Kitchen thanking us for the contribution of $1,500 that was voted at town meeting. They, the Food Bank and Pantry are serving 250 families, more or less, representing 740 individuals, providing 1,000 meals a month to people at the soup kitchen. That's amazing. They also have been providing school lunches through the summer and snacks for all of the area's schools and 300 holiday meals every year. So $1,500, they may go pretty far. That's good. And we have our annual letter from the Paton Free Library thanking us for the contribution of $34,030. Thirty cents. And a personal note from the librarian, I'm so grateful for the support from the town of West Bath. Thank you. Is there a public comment? Here we none. The first item of business is the 2019 tax commitment. There's one packet for each of you.
Thank you.
So this presents us with how many options?
Oh, I gave you multiples because I guess she was talking about using 200 from surplus?
Uh huh.
Doing a 1080. No way.
Yeah.
So that's on the top.
Okay.
And, well, and then the others, I had done the 300 from surplus. I've given you a high, a low, and a couple in between.
And we've had a conver- you've had a conversation with Mr. Brewer?
Yes, he came in this afternoon and went over all my figures and asked me what my recommendation was. And I said 300,000 from surplus and a 1050 no rate.
And he was comfortable with that? He was confident about that figure?
He agreed with all figures and no problems with 300,000 coming from surplus.
And that gives us 61,232 and change for overlay?
Mm-hmm.
And this is significantly lower than last year?
Sixty cents.
So typical 200,000 dollar whaling would be 120 dollars less in taxes.
It'll be the second time we've lowered taxes and within a decade.
Yes?
It'll go, I've noticed.
This would put you back closer to where you were in 2015. That was 1040.
Yeah.
I would like to have gone a little more in surplus, which you could, but you don't want to start the
Right.
up and down
roller coaster that we've been on. This is something we feel that can, we can even have steady ground going forward.
Well, do you have a question? Sir?
What will that surplus be minus 300,000?
2.4 million. And that includes all these little accounts that you guys talk about with SLS code Wayne Fund. That includes all that?
Investment fund.
No. I took the investment fund out.
That's a side surplus.
And
Just wanted to clarify.
All revenues and expenses to date, including tonight's warrant. That's what I'd give you.
Now, all those little, little boxes are full of money in the surplus account. Those are now treated as just one big box full of money, right?
Would you make it much easier if all of them?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You would confuse many people, but I read you.
You just want to know what the real number is.
Yes.
The bottom line number is.
Yes.
Surplus. So that's good.
And that's, you know, a very hefty surplus in August before you mail out your taxes.
Yeah.
And just as an aside, you should also be aware that we're seeing increases in revenue. It will, it will be in two major areas, excise tax, which is probably going to continue for the foreseeable future. And our agent fees are increasing too. So our revenues will continue to climb.
We are already 27,000 dollars above in excise in two months.
Wow.
Well, your cars aren't cheap anymore.
I know.
They were last year, not this year.
Wow.
But even if things slow down, you still have a good surplus to boogie things either.
Does this include the land sales transfers last week, last meeting, having 32, was it something like that? That's in this?
I like the 10, 5, 300, and 61,000 overlay. It's on page 10, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, they're all page 10.
Which page 10 is that here?
Do we, do we still have the high accumulation of the overlay? Wasn't that a high number?
Yeah, overlay's been up and down.
I mean, what's the total of the overlay account now? Isn't there a separate account?
No.
So the overlay is
That would be part of the surplus.
So we have 10, 5, which, which overlay are we looking at?
Um, 10, 5 with 61, uh, 232 overlay and a 300, um
From surplus.
Yeah.
Is that motion? Motion there?
I could.
Are you ready, Captain?
I mean, last year your overlay was 80,000. The year before it was 34.
Right. So this is
This is like in and out.
Landing in the middle.
And Mr. Brewer would like to see it, as I remember the call, about 150, wouldn't he?
No, he was fine with a 60, yeah.
Because that, because that surplus is up.
Because our surplus is sufficient.
A little pushing.
He looked at 1050,500 and I argued 200, but he's not going to argue over a nickel.
Well, he took me out, uh, behind the shed. Lowering the mill three years, four years ago.
Our past two taxes too are, I only filed 31 taxes this year.
Really?
So those are coming down, yeah.
Good.
I'm trying to get people to make payments. The work is easy up there.
Yeah.
I would like to say that it's nice of the Treasury here with a little more information. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yes, really appreciate, and the work that you've put in on this. I know you have spent hours getting all this stuff ready.
Quite. The two systems, so, you know.
I know. We'll work on it. That's a conversation for another day.
It's for another day.
I will throw that motion out.
Okay. So
10, 5, 61, 232, and 300,000.
Page 10, 3.
On page?
On page 10.
You want a second?
All right, second, do as well.
Are we ready? All right.
The evaluation, sorry.
Yeah.
But the evaluation overall is up a little over 20,000, uh, million.
Twenty million?
Yes.
Last year?
Yeah.
The state's evaluation up on this?
Taxal valuation, yeah.
Well, that's good.
And the others?
A big red building on New Meadows has a
What did you say, 37,000?
Little bit to do with that, but
And a lot of new houses too.
Little over 20 million.
Well, how the state's just going to cost a rich coastal town, giving no money to schools.
So that is, 20 million is about 7% increase. Sixers, huh?
It was on 4, wasn't it?
Do you have the motion? I do. So I had the motion with second. Yes, are you calling the vote? I think I will. Let's vote. All in favor of the motion as presented. Okay, there are three pages to sign.
All page 10?
Our residents are very excited to pay our taxes. We've been getting lots of phone calls.
Really?
Very eager.
So I'll be ready for my volunteers once in a while.
This one is?
What time? When you come in.
Okay, I'll check it out.
I'm going to have everything printed tomorrow.
While you're here, I'll be late. I'm just signed the warrant. I have to, I have to take my, my worker to the airport.
We'll be all the taxpayers.
But you'll be ready once tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Awesome.
I cannot make it full, Captain.
Who wants to?
Well, we have, uh, I've
I have
May have told the enforcement officer, I achieved that it's a team effort.
They're all the assessors. He's very excited about marrying the guest attraction.
Normally, normally I would, normally I do, but this year I'm processing grocery overpriced merchandise.
As opposed to grocery overtaxed.
Marginally impressed.
On sale tonight.
I know. Down over half a mil.
Way to go.
I mean, it's something that'll notice, but it's not overly in the 120s.
There's 400.
We dropped it down to 4. I think we dropped it to 2/4 of a mil, I think. And I don't think anybody even mentioned it.
It knows something goes down by though.
Oh, yeah.
You can miss page 1.
And one on the top of the second page.
This is why we have a good town administrator.
It takes a whole team to get this right. We've had to come back and sign things before. Okay, 1, 2, 3, 4.
Okay. The warrant, yeah. Let's see.
1, 2, 3, 4. Right?
Yeah.
Just give it to Julie. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Always a nice day when you can help out what we have lowered your taxes. Take them back, look back.
Let's have a look at this one.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Julie.
Thanks, Julie.
I have one other item to sign related to the commitment. And that is the county tax commitment. I guess we
Since we committed taxes.
You might want to sign one as well.
Oh, no. Do you want to sign their own protest? Ashley, Ashley did a pretty good job.
We heard you say that when you were on
On the, uh, Old County Pantry, as you can see, as you can see.
That's my job. I'll be able to tell this is mine because it says First Parish Church, 34. Madam, we have a question.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Do you know when the next town reevaluation is scheduled to be due?
Uh, it's not scheduled.
Oh.
We're going year to year on, um, Ronnie, the tax assessing agent is in contact with the representative from the state here with taxation. And they would make the recommendation whether we go to a reevaluation or not. For the time being, our numbers are within margin.
I agree.
And the longer we put this off, the better.
Do you know when the last one was?
Yeah, it was, uh, 2000
5?
5, 6.
Yeah.
We're getting there. Yeah.
How many places, Julie?
This one, just one, yeah.
So what's different this time around versus what triggered the last revaluation? Our numbers were in really bad shape in the different, you know, waterfront, commercial and rural residential and all that. Since the present reevaluation, we haven't touched anything. And although you did, almost, we haven't had to do it. The numbers were going against us for a couple of years and then they turned around two, two years ago, all that coming back, so we're really in good shape with all things considered.
Thank you. I am number 2. The recycling committee would like us to consider public meetings. I think Lynn may have forgotten that the meeting was tonight.
Yes.
So she's just really looking for permission to hold that forum. Right, and we told her that we discussed that. Is there, there's not really any problem with having the informational meeting? She wanted to have it at the fire station?
Yeah, she wanted to have it at the fire station. My personally, I think absolutely she should be able to have it at the fire station. And as far as collecting signatures for, to put it on the warrant, where the energy committee is an appointed committee by the Board of Selectmen.
Recycle. Recycling committee.
Well, recycling.
Right.
That's right. That, um, we should, whatever they want for a warrant, we should, the selectmen should put it on the warrant for them because they are a committee and then they don't have
Now, is this something they'll be putting forward as a committee? Or would you rather them do it just as community members? Do you have any thoughts on that? Since they are a board that's appointed or a committee that's appointed by the Board of Selectmen?
Well, they, they are
And you've already said clearly, no, we, we're not going to support this as a board.
Yeah, I, I don't think we should, I don't think we should not support it. I think we should go either way on it because, you know, if, if a town meeting, the town wants to adopt it, fine.
I just want to be clear as to whether they're doing it as a committee of the town or as community members.
Well, it was presented as a committee. I think we should do it as a committee.
Okay, yeah.
And we should facilitate the process to get it on the warrant as best we can. We don't need a favor to oppose it to do that.
Right.
It's the process, it was important.
And I, I think when we heard from people on this bill before, the recycling committee had not, had not asked for anything about that. That was an informational thing. So I think if, if the committee wants to go ahead and do that, then let, let them go. Do we want to have an official motion?
Yes, please.
That will make things easier. So we're moving support for the recycling committee to hold the informational session and to proceed with all necessary activities to have that on the warrant.
One second.
Any discussion? All right, then let's vote. All in favor? And would you inform Lynn that she has work to do now?
I will, and they'll probably want to call a meeting.
Yes, a reevaluation? Yes. If they want to meet with me, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
And next on the agenda, legislative update. How about you, Spatelli, and Julie Wright?
I like that because you can.
Oh, thank you. Well, thank you for inviting us to be with you again. This is always fun to get caught up with where you are. We thought we would give you sort of, I, I would give you sort of a highlight of the overall legislative session. And Jenny will drill down a little bit more with some of the bills that got passed. So I'll start by saying that one of the, we, we actually got a lot done this session. And one of the big main things that we got done was the budget. It was a bipartisan budget that had all but something like, I think, seven line items in the entire budget were unanimous votes of the committee members, which was a strong statement. The budget accomplished some important things that I think we've all been looking to have done. I think you felt the effects of some of them, which is to increase revenue sharing. My report from the Appropriations Committee suggests that West Bath will get a .74 increase in your FY '20 revenue sharing from the state.
That would be good.
So I don't know whether your taxing, your, your, but your, um, mill rate that's going down was for this current year.
We were a bit conservative in estimating. We didn't use the full amount, but we settled in the middle
Okay.
of the projection.
Okay, that was probably the smart thing to do. It's interesting to see how other towns are approaching this sort of windfall, if you will, this increase in revenue sharing. But increasing revenue sharing was one of the high priorities for those of us in our caucus and pleased to be able to do even more than what the governor had originally proposed. So that's one thing that should definitely benefit towns like West Bath. The other was we increased aid to education by nearly 50%. You know that the, the goal that was set by voters is 55. We've never gotten there, but we're getting a lot closer than we've been in a long time with 50% state funding for education. We also are moving towards a minimum, setting a minimum on teacher salary of 40,000. Some people wanted to do it right away. We're doing it in increments, so we won't get there right away. But I think a lot of the towns in our district will certainly appreciate that with some support coming from the state to, to fund that salary increase. So those were two of the big pieces that the budget accomplished. There were lots of others, property tax relief directly, the property tax fairness credit. You should see some of that benefit in some folks here, the people both who own and rent. If they're eligible, can save up to 1,200, 1,250 dollars or 800 dollars on rental properties if they're eligible and they're, when they file their taxes. And then also the homestead exemption went from 20,000 to 25, with, I think, a reversal to towns of 70%. So again, some benefits directly to taxpayers, but also trying to hold towns as harmless as, as we can with that budget. This is way, going back to January, but one of the first things that we did even before the budget was to expand Medicare and then fund that as well going forward. So that by now, I think there's some 30,000 additional people have signed up for healthcare who didn't have it before. So that's pretty significant. And what I understand, Jane, you may know more about this because you've been in this issue, is that 10% of the, of that 30,000, so 3,000 people who are suffering with opioid addiction have gotten healthcare coverage and so therefore are able to get treatment now that they were not able to get before. So that's also a significant move in the right direction. But that's, do I want to mention, we passed, aside from the budget, we passed a package of bills related to the high cost of pharmaceutical drugs. I sponsored one of those bills, which will increase the transparency of what we know about why drug prices increase. Drugs that increase by a certain percent will have to, the manufacturers will have to report to the state main health data organization what, what constituted that increase in price. So the idea there is to just really shine a light on what's happening with drug prices. The other bill is to do something similar with these entities called pharmacy benefit managers, which are the middlemen who can currently sort of hide in rebates they may offer to either the insurance companies or to the manufacturers. They're going to have to be much more transparent about that with this other piece of legislation. The third one was for drug importation from Canada. And you may have heard that even the current federal administration has, has agreed that this is something that we need to try to do. So we're looking forward to getting the waiver that's needed so that Maine can wholesale drug importation from Canada. And just so you know, Canadian drugs that come in, they'll be targeted and they will have to be the same safety standards as the drugs that we purchased that were made in this country. So there are certain safeguards that are built into that. And then the final piece of this four package of drug related bills was a Drug Affordability Board, which is a new kind of concept to look at what states spend for, you know, public expenditures in our, our prison system and other places to see whether we want to set, not set prices, but we'll reverse at different levels. So it's a new concept. We'll have to see how that goes. But taken all together, we think that there's going to be some direct impact on drug prices for people here in Maine. And I will say that some of our people who were involved in those bills were just out at a conference in Chicago and actually were presenting information because Maine is, as you might expect, sort of on the cutting edge of doing some of this kind of work. Since the federal government isn't doing very much of it, states are starting to step up. Maine has stepped up ahead of some of the other states. So that was pretty significant, putting that all together. The other thing that I'm really proud of is that we finally passed my student debt bill of rights, which has to do with companies that service student loans, that, they're federal student loans for the most part, but these are private companies that are contracted but with the federal government to collect the student debt. And they are now going to have to register with the state and play by the rules essentially. And again, because the federal government is not regulating this, these markets very well, if at all, Maine is now, again, stubborn enough to do this. It's the basic consumer protection. I can't tell you how many people I talked to, heard stories about, who took out a $20,000 or they had $20,000 in student debt when they left college. And because of various miscommunications and, and bad information that they got from their loan servicer, they now had $80,000 in student debt that they were struggling to pay back. So this, I think, is going to help students of all ages, because I also talk to people who pay not just their student debt, but their children's student debt. And I will tell you, one of the things that I learned in this whole process is that student debt is the only kind of debt that is not dischargeable. You can't file bankruptcy, bankruptcy to get out from under any of your student debt. It can carry you to the grave. They can, they can garner your social security to pay your student debt. So it was really important for our folks here in Maine that we put these consumer safeguards in place and stop the worst of these bad practices that were getting people in trouble. So we also passed some, a bit, a couple bills that have to do with healthcare, but I think I'm going to let Jake talk about those because we're closer to those issues. And also some primary resources issues.
So I want to add my thanks to you for letting us come and change. So, I want to add my thanks to you for letting us come and change the date, because the original date we had was special session.
That's right, that's right.
So, we, who knew when we'd be done? And we wouldn't have been done in time, no. Um, so, Eloise and I both are on Marine Resources. I'm chairing it as a House Chair. Senate Chair is from Camden. Eloise is also the Assistant Majority Leader in the Senate, and I serve on Veterans and Legal Affairs as well as Marine. So, but that doesn't restrict what you do. That's just the committee you go to.
It's where you sit.
Yeah, it's where you sit. Um, so, I also represent Harpswell and part of Brunswick, um, Old Bath Road, part of Brunswick and all of West Bath. So, I'm in my third session, you're in your
Second.
Second plus.
Yeah, it's two and a half.
Two and a half. So, the reason we come is to give you an update, but also to hear what, what's on your minds and what we should be thinking about doing beyond what we've done so far. So, I'd like to make sure we get there. And before I forget, I want to mention, as I have before, that we welcome families to bring children to page, which is great fun. They get to be in the House or the Senate, and they deliver messages all over the, the body, and sometimes, I was very excited my first session. I got a note from the speaker, and I opened it, well, I'm very excited, because, um, I was pretty starstruck. And it said, "Keeping the Kids Busy."
Ah.
So, there, there's a lot of important messages that go through, but it's also just a chance for the kids to see what goes on, and who knows? In fact, I had my grandson up paging, and the Secretary of State had a long chat with him and told him that's how we got started, and now he's Secretary of State. So, anything can happen. Uh, we also love to have people come and hear the inspirational message, which is the start, in the House, it's every night we have session, I think it's
It's Sunday as well.
It is, it's right. So, we need people to come. It doesn't, you don't have to be, um, a minister or a priest or, um, rabbi, just somebody who wants to give an inspirational message. And, uh, Bill Cummings from West Bath has come several times. And just to visit, you know, have a selectman's meeting in front of the state house and come to it. Um, so, on the, all the area I represent is Marine-related, and most of yours
Mm-hmm.
is, Eloise has all of Saginaw County interested. So, on the, on the, uh, Marine Resources Committee, we dealt a lot with, um, lobster issues, elver, um, aquaculture, um, something, a lot about shellfish. So, um, ideas for legislation come from, you know, it's an idea that we've brewed from working in our districts. It comes from constituents, it comes from select boards. Um, one of the bills, our Marine bill, was around municipalities being able to have some, um, reimbursement for the work they do on aquaculture. And that came from Harpswell's Harbor Master, and then the whole Harbor Master group voted on it and wanted to see that happen. So, that was a bill that we passed, and it caps the amount so that, uh, uh, one town can't charge so much that it pushes it to the, to another town, which isn't real fair. Um, we, uh, one of our colleagues on the committee had a bill that was about allowing more crew on lobster boats, which is just like one more person, and it's important, depending on what happens with whales. If you've probably been following all the possibilities of what might happen, and if the lines are longer, you have to have a long, um, a lot of traps on it, you, it's a safety issue. So, that was important. We, uh, had a bill, this was a, the department can also bring bills forward, and then a legislator will sponsor, but one of the department bills was to tighten up things in the elver fishery, because there's been, there've been some problems there because of such a high-value, um, industry. Um, about shellfish size, that municipalities with shellfish ordinances can set, um, maximum size, but not, and, and minimum, but not less restrictive than the state. So, it's not, there was some interest in making it smaller, and it's very controversial whether that's a good idea or not. So, it doesn't allow you to go less than state regulations, but you can make it bigger than state regulations. So, a more municipal control. Um, another constituent suggestion, um, that relates to Marine is about, about lobster fisheries. Um, a lobster man who develops a serious illness or has a serious accident allows that person to apply for a medical waiver and not have to give up their license. So, they can still fish when they can fish and still be able to be self-sufficient, but not, not have to stop totally if they can still fish. So, those kinds of things to make the industry more responsive to what the real needs of people are. Um, so, in the, so, those are some of the Marine issues. We, um, one of the bills I put in was about lobster licenses. That was a fairly controversial bill. People are on the waitlist for lobster licenses for ten, twelve, and more years. So, this was to settle, if you're on ten years, you can get a license. We, we carried that bill over because of the whale rules and the reduction of bait. It was premature to do something now with not knowing what's going to happen, and we still don't know. Um, the, the commissioner's going to do, he calls it the roadshow. He'll go around to each lobster zone and present, um, whatever. In this, in this case, it's about whale rules, and they were scheduled for September, but they delayed it because we don't know federally. It's, the governor, the speaker, um, others have come out and said, "Give us some science before you slap this, um, lobster man that's going to kill the industry." And it's iconic, it's tourism, it's livelihoods, it's everything.
Are you on the zone council?
Yes. Yeah, I'm on F, and you're on E. Yeah. We've been assigned to be non-voting members, um, on each zone. There are people assigned, which hasn't always been true, or the department hasn't always known. So, I shared that with the department, so they know which legislator was on what zone, and will be at those meetings and won't be able to vote, but we can
Listen and speak.
Speak, yeah. Um, there was another department bill that was about tagging of shellfish, and it was just to make the, there was an inconsistency in the law. So, this makes it consistent under this statute and that statute instead of cross statute. Um, in the health area, um, again, we serve on the committees, we serve on what we represent our district. So, I've continued to work on the opioid crisis. I chaired the opioid task force last session, and it hasn't gone away. We're doing a lot with the epidemic, but we're not there yet. One of the bills I put in was about developing a prevention program for youth, and, um, for various reasons, it didn't happen last, it was a recommendation of the task force, but, um, basically, the governor didn't allow the department to come and meet with the committee last session. So, I put the bill in this time, and it's, rather than passing the bill, it's been incorporated into the governor's council on opioids. So, I'm on that task force, and that work is happening. Um, I've worked on reproductive healthcare. That's just an ongoing tweaking of things. Um, and another that's, which, you know, and that's also opioid use. If someone is affected by substance use disorder, that's an issue for families with children, with pregnancy, with everything. So, um, addressing that. And then, a, a department bill from the Department of Health and Human Services that I sponsored was about infants affected by substances. Not necessarily illegal, but if you're prescribed a drug that causes neonatal abstinence syndrome, in other words, the baby, when born, is affected by that drug use, it requires the department to make a plan. It also says this isn't about, um, penalty, um, criminalizing or abuse, it's about a safety plan for that child to address their substance, the effect of that substance on them. So, that's the department saying, it's actually a federal requirement that the department address that because of the opioid epidemic, but not restricted to opioids. If you're, you might be prescribed all sorts of things because of your healthcare needs, and those affect infants in different ways. Um, in the legislature, if bills pass but aren't funded, they go on the appropriations table, and some of those bills were funded going through. And before I leave the world, I'm going to make sure that we fund addressing the issue of expired Marine flares.
Hmm.
If it kills me.
[laughing]
And that was a constituent bill. That was a, a lobster man called me and said, "What am I supposed to do with these? They're in my basement, they're in my shed, they're in my garage, and they're highly dangerous. They're pyrotechnic devices."
I thought that passed.
It passed, but it's on the appropriations table.
Has to be funded.
Forty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Anybody want to?
Yeah, let's make a motion for it. [laughing] We have all the subjects around.
Yeah.
I could talk about flares all day long, and I won't. But it's, it's my heart bill, because it came from somebody who recognized the need. It's clearly a need. I put it in last session, and it passed. It got vetoed, and then we couldn't override the veto. And it got vetoed just because. This time, um, the fire marshal and I have been working on this all along. The word is out, he keeps saying, since I've started working on this bill, the word is out, and he's got two tons of expired flares, which is great, because they're coming out of people's basements, they're not going into the ocean, they're also highly polluting. They have percholates in them, asbestos, so they're not good for the environment. So, what we do with them is burn them at high temperatures in EPA-approved incinerator. He has one, he needs a second one. We came up with this brilliant plan to deal with this without having to buy a new incinerator. We're actually buying it, but it would be funded by the program, but the Coast Guard called me and said, "That's breaking federal law, so we can't do that." So
Heaven forbid.
So, the answer is to use funds to buy a new incinerator. So, we would have two? Yes?
No, part of the problem is the expiration date of those flares.
Yes.
They expire when they're still good.
Yes. Well, and the
I mean, they're all good when they're expired.
Yeah, until
What would, is a judge of that, uh, should be doing some, some adjustments?
Well, and of course, I've talked to the manufacturers, and let them know that that's an issue. But, one, the one piece of advice that's out there that is true, a lot of the advice online is wrong. It's polluting, it's dangerous, it's, don't do it. But the one piece of advice that's good is carry a few, because they may still work. On your vote.
They all work.
Well, well, one of my colleagues, yeah, I actually sit next to him, he's on Marine, and he sits next to me in the House, said, he had one that was like twenty years old. He was showing his grandson, he said, "This won't work." And he shot it, and it did go off, and it caused a brush fire. So, don't shoot them off.
Even handheld fires, they last a lot longer than theras.
That's right, that's true, that's true. So, that's another issue we can work on. But if we could purchase this incinerator. Um, other bills that are carried over, um, and this is another constituent bill from West Bath, eelgrass, which we dealt with with the dredging issue, but it's also a big concern, its habitat. It's important for cleansing the oceans, and that, we passed the bill, it's about restoring mapping of eelgrass beds, so we know where they are. Sometimes you can restore the beds, if, not always, but sometimes. So, if we know where they're declining, we might be able to do something. That got a unanimous browsing support from the Environment Committee. However, it will cost about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So, that's on the appropriations table. And we wrote the bill so that other funds can be, it doesn't have to be state funds. So, I'm trying desperately to find other funding sources. So, again, I'm going to call, I just have a tip that ducks unlimited might be a good resource, because for duck hunters, eelgrass is important.
What, what with the ducks?
Yes.
[laughing]
Um, yes. As I mentioned, we carried over the lobster bill, and, uh, bills get carried over where they need more work, or something like the whales, we're, we're going to wait and see what happens. Um, one of the, the bills, um, that was the one we carried over in Marine, we only carried, oh, we carried over two. The other is about, um, we established a, um, the bill passed that we would set up a research fund for shellfish. It's the only fishery that doesn't have, um, a research fund. And it, rather than put it on harvesters, it would be a fund that would come from the state, that would be a non-lapsing fund that could be used to, to, um, put out small grants for people to do research on what helps restore the flats, what helps keep the flats. So, that is fifty thousand dollars, and that's waiting on the appropriations table. Um, the good news is that the state's budget is looking good at the moment.
Yeah.
And so, for the legislature reconvenings in January, there'll be hopefully some resources that we can look at when appropriations starts taking some of these bills off the table.
It's a more hopeful environment than it was.
Yeah, so, we, we get lobbied by lobbyists and advocates, and we also lobby. So, we lobby the people on the Appropriations Committee. Um, neither of us is on it, but we, I've been working hard on eelgrass and flares and research and everything else that, healthcare bills that are really important that we pass, like getting kids unstuck from emergency rooms. Kids get admitted for a crisis, the crisis passes, they're still there for weeks, even months, in the emergency room, because there's no service for them. So, we've got a lot of work to do. Uh, in West Bath, issues that have come up, eelgrass, um, shellfish, um, cutting of trees along, and repaving, which is happening, and along with that is tree cutting, which hasn't made people happy.
Uh, it just looks very sad.
It does look very sad, and we
I haven't driven on the highway until they get it cleaned.
Well, it's
Where is it?
Well, I
I would want them as much.
Kind of looks like a war zone right now, like
It was much better today than
It was, I was
It's facility.
Yeah. And they, I passed on constituent concerns, we, we did, no, you did too, um, to DOT, and they explained their reasoning. It was, uh, animals' safety, and it was also about, um,
Visibility and
Sunlight.
Sunlight on the road. But, it's pretty stark what happened. They also said they're going to plant, uh, native bushes that will be lower, so. The other thing was the culverts. We had a lot of conversation about the Culvert Berry's Mill, and I, one of the things that, um, I looked into was, um, Sea Grant, the main, University of Maine, is a Sea Grant University, and Sea Grant is a, um, is a group that will facilitate controversial issues. And it's too late for that culvert, it's, you know, it was considered an emergency, it happened, it's done, but, um, there continue to be concerns about what the level that that went and water quality, and we should, we have talked about that. And I wanted to give you, oh, the Sea Grant contact person, I talked, this is the director, and as the Chair of Marine, I'm about to go to their site review. It's a NOAA federal program, so they get reviewed every five years, and they have to present what they do and why they do it. And, so, I talked, talked with her about culverts, and again, that one's happened, but it's a possibility that they could be a resource. Now, I asked her, "Does this cost the town anything?" Because that would be an issue, and not, not at the initial stages, but depending on what they do, it might be something you want to engage in, or not. But I want you to handle that.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's just the tip of the iceberg.
One question I have. Now, back to, uh, you said you'd, uh, managed to, uh, get some local regulations for, um, shellfish?
Well, shellfish, if that, a municipality with a shellfish ordinance can have some control over size for harvesting, can, um, this research fund would benefit towns, because you could apply for a grant, which is, we have to get the money, but
Free money?
Yeah.
But my question is, why, why wouldn't this, uh, But my question is, why, why wouldn't the municipal authority restrict it, or minuscule as it is, why wouldn't that also extend to the oyster fishery?
What, the aquaculture thinking? Yeah, yeah. Well, aquaculture, we...
There, there is a limit on wild harvest, what you harvest from the wild for oysters.
Yeah.
There is none, there is none of farm reeds.
Yeah.
Like there isn't on the state-controlled harvest, maybe the size of oysters.
Is that actually wild or aquaculture?
Are you talking about the size of the oysters, or municipal control?
Municipal control.
Yeah.
Of how many?
Or...
Of the aquaculture leases themselves.
I mean, if municipality is now allowed to control some part of the shellfish fishery, why would that...
Just try to open, and you're just gonna try and cry yourself in.
Trying to help there.
Let me just interject here, that the whole area of aquaculture has been, shall we say, controversial. There's a lot happening, you know this, in, in aquaculture. Your representative proposed, and I supported her proposal, that we create a task force to look at all of the various issues that are affecting aquaculture, all up and down the coast. That was not well received. That, oh...
It was.
Does that have an understatement?
Oh my gosh.
However, however, so, the issues have not gone away. So there is, the university has now gotten a sizable grant to study issues around aquaculture. So, we're gonna continue to have conversations about the issues that you're bringing up, and many others in the years ahead. Because, you know, it's an important industry for our state, it's a growing industry. There are some ways, some people have some ideas on how to make it more efficient, effective, productive, and have, you know, less impact, or less negative impacts on communities perhaps.
Yeah, capitalize on the pluses.
Yeah.
And address the not-so-pluses.
So, you know, stay tuned, you know, if you've got ideas on what you think would help, it's, you know, let us know, because we both see that in...
I went to one seminar or meeting last year. A gentleman from Marine Resources was there to explain...
John Lewis?
Yes, yeah. I walked away with the sense, the feeling that Marine Resources, which is so protective, and they didn't want anybody knocking on the door to, you know, for, to disrupt their little...
Authority.
Fiefdom. Authority. And the trouble is, there are issues on the water with the aquaculture that need to be addressed. And the bad answer each time was, well, we've got these thirteen thing, thirteen...
Oh, like the...
Bulls that need to do that.
Yeah.
If you meet 'em, then you can, you know.
Well, it is, it is state-regulated. The toe into it was that the town could charge for the work the harbor master does. That, that was really pretty significant, because it wasn't something, you know, I had to work with a municipal association, with a department, with the harbor masters. And it's a small, it's a small thing, but it's a toe-in. The department at, I've talked with the department, and with the chef, the Aquaculture Advisory Committee is meeting on the nineteenth, albeit that. There are several issues that have come up. And the department is planning on putting in a bill about aquaculture. So I need to know what specifically they're gonna do. And do we need clocheur, that last state to put in bills, is the twenty-seventh of September this year? So if there's something that should be there that isn't, that's an opportunity for us to put in a bill. But it really was a misery, that task force bill. It just makes perfect sense, why aren't, why don't we talk about it? But the resistance was intense. It was awful.
Intense from who?
Many sides.
Well, the department didn't like it.
Department of Marine Resources, yes.
What a surprise.
The aquaculture industry was the most adamant against it. However, people doing aquaculture, yes, but people doing aquaculture do want, you know, we've been approached by some of the longstanding aquaculture farmers, harvesters, who wanna see some, particularly in the LPAs, the limited purpose aquaculture, which is the huge growth that we're seeing. Wanna see some things changed there. So, that's, it's, it's not that they're totally fiefdom, it's, let's be reasonable, let's talk about it, but not in a dangerous way. You know, it was, they were afraid of losing something. And then the people who liked the bill were people who didn't wanna look at it. And I always think of you talking about, you live on the water, you live in a working land. So, we gotta find that balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Sometimes it takes a while to have these conversations, you know. You've gotta get people's attention, you've gotta break down some of their initial resistance. Change is hard, you know, it, it, we were opening the door potentially to some change, and that made people nervous, so. But now, I think more people recognize that there are issues with the way we're doing aquaculture in the state, and we just need to keep our eye on it and see if we can't make some improvements that will make the experience better for everybody.
Yeah, it's growing leaps and bounds. And there are benefits to it, but it's balance.
And the conflict is necessary. It's a part of the deal.
Yeah.
Question on the revenue sharing, like, what were the dollar amounts?
For West Bath?
Yes. Last year versus this year?
Last year FY nineteen, my numbers say, West Bath got forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-three. And for FY twenty, West Bath is slated to get eighty-six thousand three hundred seventy-six.
Okay, well, and on schools, I assume there was not much of a main special need funding? Nothing happened there?
Which still, not for minimum receipt.
Well...
My position will be, until the end of my life, that special education funds should go with the child, not come from the town. That's a big one. That is huge. The kid needs the service, and should not come out of towns' resources. It's a matter of hospitality for a child with...
Yeah, it's not fair.
Yeah.
So you got no way with that? You got no way with that?
I don't think so. I mean, I don't receive a different change. One of the things that happened this year is that we were making up a lot of lost time, a lot of, a lot of lost effort on many departments from the last eight years. And education was one of those departments that had been hit hard, and there was a lot of rebuilding that had to happen to that department. So, yeah, we didn't get to that one, but I'm glad you brought it up.
But it also talked about the fifty-five percent. So as minimum receiver, as West Bath is, when will we reach fifty-five percent?
We're not there yet.
No, I realize that, but...
Close to fifty, but...
What's gonna be helping these, the towns with minimum receivers? What, what helps coming down the road for us in school funding?
That's a question.
There's a whole bunch of minimum, millions of dollars given to schools across the state this year, extra money, and that was all hooray, hooray.
Yeah.
But the minimum receivers didn't get much done, did they?
No.
So how's that help the town of West Bath, or helps whoever else?
And, you know, when Adam was here, we met with the department on this issue. There was some emergency fund. One of their answers is, well, they've put up these regional areas. So, there's regional in West Cassett, West Bath. And that isn't the right answer. I agree with you. I mean, I lived in a different small town, and new minister came to town, had a child with a hearing impairment, went to a special school. It blew, well, you, same thing here, it's a budget.
Three years.
And that's not fair to anybody, so...
Most of all, it's not fair to the kid.
Yeah, yeah.
The child's services need to be continuous, no matter where that child is living.
I agree.
You were talking about making things more efficient and productive. This area needs some work. It could be better.
Absolutely.
The statewide jail administration's having the same battle over funds that should go with the inmates as they're transferred around. If they're not, they stay with facility. Same exact, and they've been fighting it forever, and they're getting nowhere. Same thing's gonna happen with a school, I think.
You know, that, one of the various bills set up work groups. And I, I had one about guardianship, people who are in the hospital. Guardianship is if the, needs to be figured out so they can leave the hospital. Another one is around criminal justice reform. Whether they'll address funding, I don't know. But that, that's the kind of thing that the Criminal Justice Committee has dealt with, needs to keep dealing with. Yeah, we're not, we've got a lot of work to do. We're not done yet. We made a lot of progress this last year, but there's a lot more to do. And so it's helpful to do these reminders that this is still the work ahead.
When they bring up, calling, in our case, a rich coastal town, check with the school, in Siamese students are on subsidized lunch programs.
Yeah.
It's like forty, fifty percent at West Bath, I believe.
Is it?
No, women.
I've seen that in...
But check with that, and how can they save a rich coastal town if these students have received help to have a lunch? In many cases, the breakfast as well. You know, all year round, the summer programs, they serve them lunch and breakfast. So how are we a rich coastal town at that percentage of the population of students who need help?
So you're suggesting that that should be considered?
It surely should be considered.
Well, remember, we were looking in, looking into the subsidies a while ago, and discovered that we were a rich coastal community, and minimum, minimum recipient. But a city like a Falmouth was getting just a ton of subsidy.
Yeah, that doesn't equate to...
Now, how is Falmouth, you know, poorer than we are?
Yeah.
We don't have that many lawyers per capita.
Well, we have, like, all the three departments got new commissioners. And education, the commissioner is now Pender, Mikan, who was the Assistant Superintendent in Brunswick, so she knows the area.
But how can they ignore so many towns in the state, because they say you don't need them? And they just ignore me? And just push it off, and give millions of dollars to other schools and say, "Well, you don't need it."
Yeah.
You know, they probably had the right idea when Governor Baldacci first hatched the school consolidation idea, but, I mean, they, they create, part of my language, they created such a poor, a whole system, that they got withdrawals, you know...
The idea was good, the execution was a little...
It was pushed too fast.
Yeah, absolutely.
But had to get it done by election day.
And that was a mess. I was working in...
And our superintendent wanted to be the first one of an hour's shoe.
Yeah.
I was working in Fort Worth when that was happening. And Fort Worth was big enough, they didn't need to consolidate. And boy, there was a lot of, because it was, it was a very difficult process, and it didn't...
It's actually made sense.
Please ask the commissioner, why are we a rich coastal town, you know, subsidized lunches, with a high percentage?
Yeah. She was just on main call, and talking about specialism.
I didn't know, I would've called. They would give me a call.
Yeah, yeah. Any other, of course, we're always available, you know that. So let us know as things come up, but...
Keep us in mind for more grant money for Sabino Swamp culvert, in our Burge Point.
Well, I was thinking about that with Sea Grant.
Yeah, we're always looking for more leveraging funds for that project.
And maybe when we, when this came up, we talked with Army, I talked with the Army Corps, you talked with Army Corps. That was it, we had to do it that way. Is there another, I don't know. Sea Grant, that's the kind of thing they do. There's also the Coastal Communities Program, which is now backed by the Department of Marine Resources.
Yeah, that might be a call.
They help towns and municipalities do planning around their coastal infrastructures. So that might be, I, I don't know the status of that at the moment, because it's dependent on NOAA funding. And as I recall, this federal administration has targeted NOAA for decreasing their funds, but it's always...
I understand there's no money, the program's starting up, but there's no funds available, yeah.
That could be, I haven't, but if we found or lift.
Wondering about mitigation too. Climate change being such an issue right now, if we could work some mitigation funds into bolstering our roads, bolstering our infrastructure.
Absolutely.
That might be an angle that we can come out of.
So I did wanna mention just that, one of the other good things that happened was the Climate Change Council, the Climate Council that is being formed. And it's, it was a governor's initiative, but it folded in some other ideas, including one from Lydia Bloom, a coastal climate study group. The council itself is being named currently, and then there are different subgroups, subtask groups, that are gonna look at different aspects of climate change. And that might be another body to pay attention to. And to make sure that they're looking at the kinds of things that you think are important in a town like West Bath, for, you know, road maintenance, water mitigation.
Road lifting.
Yeah.
Same issue right there.
Yeah. And we certainly have that in Erasoc. I mean, there's that part on the marsh where it's certain tides now. Some of us can't get off the island.
Every town on the coast is similar.
Yeah.
Lydia, Representative Bloom is from Coastal York, and she's, she does a coastal caucus, which presents, people come and present, and a lot on climate change, including sea level rise, and, you know, preparing. I, I'm gonna be on Harpswell's Climate Resilience Task Force. And that, I'm looking forward to that, that would inform me, maybe that would be beneficial for wherever. But it's, you can't, Lydia's bill, she had a bill about addressing sea level rise proactively. And one of my colleagues in the house stood, she was talking about, this is what's happening, this is where it's gonna be in ten years, twenty years, fifteen, fifty years. And one of my colleagues stood up and said, "Fifty years, we don't need to worry about that. Fifty years." What? Roads are flooding now. So, that got rolled into this Climate Council. We, we did carry over another Marine Resources bill, but the research bill actually is on the appropriations table. But the other bill we carried over was Marine Debris, which is also an issue that I've heard from a lot of West Bath constituents about plastics, ghost gears, microbeads, everything. So that, we carried it over to work on it. And it would probably be a joint effort of, effort of Marine and Environment Committee, because it affects land and sea, so.
Another bill that was held over, I just remembered, is a bill that will, I think, has a tax on pesticides, to raise more tick and brown-tailed moth research, which is, it's thanks to Bill Tatcher by our representative, Chetla.
Oh, right.
Yeah, she's been working on brown-tail for a long time.
We were lucky this year with the brown-tailed moth, at least in our, my neighborhood was Georgetown and Erasoc.
I think there's more sightings of Emerald Ashborders now, that's starting to increase.
Yeah. And I don't know why, but that reminded me of one more. Can you, give me one more to talk about? Remember October twenty-seventeen in the storm? Heard from a lot of West Bath people. And that was a horror show, if you probably remember. So, one of the, this was another constituent bill from Harpswell Selectment. Can't we do something about the outages on a municipal level? So that was the bill he put in. Well, having, my idea was, the town could hire qualified people. The argument against it was, there won't be any, because CMP will have hired them all. So, we worked and worked and worked on that bill, and it became a way to address extended power outages, but it required that the, any public, private utility like CMP, Mera, has to...
has to address roads and outages. So road blocking, we had roads, it was horrible in West Bath, it was horrible in this whole area, Woolwich everywhere. So they have to address roads opening and outages scientifically. In other words, they have to have the staff to do it. So they have to have sufficient field staff and management staff. And there's all sorts of repercussions if they don't do it. So that, we'll see, next big storm. But that was ridiculous, so. Which is, I don't know why that reminded me of.
Trees.
Trees.
I was in the trees.
Yes, that was.
They're trees, I know. Thank you.
I have a question. I heard on the radio, and I think it was the morning after your special session, something about eight hundred million dollars set aside that was above the on budget. Do you know what that was?
Well, budget revenues are coming in at a good pace. I don't remember what the figure was. I, as a member of the council, I get the budget reports regularly. But I don't have the number in my head. If I'm guessing, that's maybe what they were referring to?
I was kind of half listening, I didn't really get, I just zeroed in on the eight hundred million.
I don't know.
And legislature approved and.
Well, the purpose of the session really was the bonds that had not been addressed.
Yeah.
The only one that passed was transportation. The others.
Yeah, the only one that might have helped with infrastructure-like water systems didn't pass, were broadband.
I have just four research.
We did have several broadband bills that passed.
Yeah.
One that I had was that municipalities, it's, it's now, broadband is now considered an essential service, like sewer and water, airports and parking lots.
It's just.
Yeah, so if a town chooses to set up their own system, they can't get sued anymore. And towns, Isle, Isleboro was, did that, but had to go through huge legal bills to do it. Sanford, same thing. So now it's, towns can do it if they choose, but they're not required to, obviously.
The companion bill that I sponsored was what was called a make-ready bill, which allows for municipalities to not have to pay the power companies to install broadband on the poles. Because there's a section of the pole that is actually set aside for municipal use. And so they can't, municipalities can no longer be required to pay for anything that might be required for them to install broadband in that area. So I know my town, Erasik in Georgetown, we're very happy with that because they do have a plan to try to expand broadband.
Yeah, so if a town wants to do it, that's, both are very helpful. We didn't get the bond, we didn't get the bond for career and technical education, which is so frustrating, having worked in schools and worked with kids who are all kinds of learners. That's a really, and we, you know, have plumbers.
And have you tried to get a plumber?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We just went, we toured BIW this morning, and they're hiring massive numbers of people, but.
They have to train them.
Can't, yeah, they can't find electricians, anything.
Neither can the rest of us.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing the work that you do and for keeping us up to date.
Me as well.
And if that special ed bill comes up?
Yeah.
Let me know because I will be there to testify.
Absolutely.
Because.
That would be great.
That is important.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I want to look into that free and reduced issue.
I had those figures at one point.
I'm sure Emily, the principal has them.
Yeah, I bet every principal in the state has them.
That's right, because they do want a lunch programs.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just want to note for the, for the public camera, people who are watching and who observe Kath Waiton Valley leave abruptly, she has a family emergency that she's tending. This is item number four, the LED lighting project update.
Okay.
Look at me.
Vision Energy gave us two different options for including dimmers here at the town office. At the town office, we're dealing with four offices that we would like to include dimmers. That would be my office, the office where Garley and Julie are assessing and co-enforcement. We're finding right now that either the lights are too bright and we're sitting in the dark, choosing to sit in the dark, or, you know, it's just, it's not a very good solution right now. And if we just go with the regular LED lights, it would be much too bright. So my recommendation, if you're willing to do a little ceiling patching, would be the first option, where we would replace the troughers with a narrower option, which would include the dimming capacity. The total cost of that project would be eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, which is three thousand thirty-eight dollars more than we appropriated for. The overage at the school that we did not appropriate for, and that includes dimmers, is six thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars. Emily indicated that she could cover fifteen hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which was the actual amount listed on the change order, which would leave a total of four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars that we didn't appropriate for.
At the school.
At the school. So the total that we would need to come up with on the, you know, the contribution from the town as opposed to the school is seven thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We currently have a little over eleven thousand dollars in our building capital reserve. So I would recommend taking it from that pot.
I think it still needs to go back to voters. I really do. This isn't what the voter is voting for. I am close.
The work at the school is done, so we need to deal with that piece.
Well, there is no option at town meeting for this. And clearly, in my mind, it's a building fund, it's part of a building, whether it's the school, fire station, or town office. And the board has lacked control of those building funds. And there's no stipulation on the funds that has to be voted on at town meeting to use those funds. So clearly, eleven thousand dollars in the town's building account is something the board has jurisdiction to, because that's what the fund was for, to repair the buildings.
Yeah, but this wasn't a repair, this was a retrofit, new fancy oxy-toxy lighting.
Well, it is in a sense that, Peter, but it's, it's a school, a town office.
It's lighting they didn't even need.
The, well, I think they did, half of those lights in the town office, in the school, were covered with tarps, coverings with cloth, because the lighting was too bright and they couldn't use it. Other rooms weren't bright at all. This will pay for itself, in the town office case, I think it's four years. In the school, eight years. If you have dimmers on it, then you use less energy, so they would pay for it sooner, I would think. As well as, as rates increase from CMP, there will also be quicker savings. And I did stop by before school started to talk with the teachers there. And I talked with four teachers who were setting their classrooms up when school started. And they all were very enthused that they could control the lighting now. A couple of teachers had headaches from those lights. A number of students had headache problems and eye problems because of the lights. And now with these dimmers installed, it'll be better for teachers and students. And the fact that it's been paid for in four, in eight years is a big plus. Power won't be cheaper. In this school, the town building fund is set up for the selectmen to, if they choose to vote, to address building problems.
Yeah.
It's not required by a town vote, a town meeting in those funds, just like the Arquitects' Fund is not required at a town vote. It's a fund that the board can choose.
Well, I'm just wondering, one out of three.
I'm not sure we would get anywhere to have a vote with just, just two of us tonight. So I think we should table this for tonight.
Yeah.
And I moved to table. Give you a second. Yeah, I did.
One other question. We gave the schools a capital fund from our issue one money, when we first started up, four years ago, for buildings. Are the funds left in that account?
Well, Emily is saying that she could offer, but I don't know.
There's, but.
She says that's all she has. I don't know about any other funds.
Well, maybe you could look into the fact that there was a school capital account. We gave a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And had to be approved by the board, I believe, this, this board, selectmen, to spend those monies. And I'm just inquiring if we have spent all of those monies yet.
Yeah, I don't know, because that's not an account that Julie ever mentioned to me.
It may be gone.
Yeah, I don't know.
It may be spent on, you know.
In the bathrooms and tiles and all that. It may be gone, I'm just inquiring if it's still.
And I'm wondering, is it, would it have been a separate bank account or would it have been on paper?
I'm not sure.
Worth finding out.
I don't think it would have been, but you never know.
It was, it was a capital building account for the school.
Okay, yeah. So move to table?
Don't move.
Okay. Uh, D for Francis, we have those?
Yes, we do. We don't.
We have this climate.
Yeah. Do much on that.
Just sign your name, and then I'll be recording them at the registry tomorrow.
You mean, we got chance already?
Yes, yes. The D for Angerski.
Well, wasn't it coming like thirty days?
And this is Rory.
Okay. And. Ready, yeah, okay. Okay, so that to you.
Mm-hmm.
And this is Rob. Yes, yes. Happy to sponsor.
Next, uh, Hennessy Road.
No, I think that would be Hill Road.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't even talk about it.
Just a little big.
What?
That's not gonna happen.
Okay, good. That is good news. Um, let's see, policy on treasurer's disbursement warrants.
This is a document that I haven't been able to find in the office. It's just so that we have something in writing saying it's okay for one member of the board of selectmen to sign the payroll warrant.
Which we have been doing for years, years.
Yeah, it has, it's renewable annually, so we're supposed to do it every year.
Okay.
I want to make sure that we have that document on file. And then we'll just.
Have you had a chance to see this?
No, I thought we, I thought we had one on file.
Well, since it has to be done every year, I think it's very easy to miss it.
Yeah.
So.
Start a new file.
Yeah. It's a brand-new day.
You ready to authorize?
I am.
All right, move that we authorize the policy as printed.
Check it out.
All in favor? All right, let's sign this.
While you're signing, can I start off the other?
Of course.
I just wanted to announce for the board and for our viewers at home that one person has returned nomination papers for the school board. Ashley Randall will be running for a third term. And both Mark Travis and Suzanne Andreessen have returned papers for the board of selectmen. So we'll have a race for selectmen in November as well.
Good.
We will set up a candidate tonight?
We will.
Excellent.
It's usually October, as we get a little bit closer to the election, so it's fresh in their minds. But we do an awful lot of absentee voting, so I think early October might be wiser.
Yeah, because last year it was like October twenty-third or something. Because we were waiting for you.
Yes, very nice.
Waiting desperately.
You're right, you're incredible on a desk with people.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Yeah, it's good, the clerks like that, yeah.
Well, I mean, as people age and, I like, I like it because it gives people time to look at the ballot. When you're in that little booth and there's a line and you're, you know, you're tired and you just want to go home, I like it, I like it myself, just to take it home and look it over and give it a think. I endorse it. So. Maybe the week of Indigenous Peoples' Day?
Yeah, I'll reach out to the candidates and see what their thoughts are and their schedules. I want to make sure everyone's in attendance. Is that week work good for you?
It's good for me.
Okay, that was our other.
Any other other?
Any other other?
Hey, on, another thing that I am absolutely not prepared for, on, uh, on the committee structures that we discussed last time, I have two notes to myself. One is revision, and one is co-mingling funds. I have no idea what either one of those refers to.
Let's.
Revision is the LED project.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. That was from the other. Let's take a, let's take a look at this.
Yeah, that's supposed to be on the next agenda.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay, I have no idea why I wrote those.
Co-mingling funds.
It did come up, those words were mentioned at the last meeting, I'm trying to remember why.
Me too, yeah.
I'm gonna review the tape and see if I can.
I used a post-it note, that means.
Here, co-mingling.
Sitting on the porch reading it.
Okay.
So, and thought it was important, and now I have no idea what it is. So, okay.
Okay.
Where are it, Peter?
I'm on the case.
Glad somebody is.
I'll listen to the, I'll listen to the tape on my Friday water bill tomorrow at six in the morning.
Okay. Show me adjourned.
Is that motion?
Oh, yeah. I want you to.
That's a motion and a second. All in favor? Good night, and thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
You'll notice behind your account updates in your packet, yet I also include some, of course, on the.